Okay, good evening. I'd like to open the board meeting for Cordova Recreation Park District. Today is Wednesday, May 16th.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'd like to welcome Recreation Superintendent Jill Nuns to the podium to introduce our pledge speaker.
Good evening. Alyssa Rasmussen is here to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
All right. So I know many of you have met Alyssa, but Alyssa comes from us, comes to the district with over 10 years of cross-functional experience in editing, producing, proofreading, and writing for print and digital formats, including social media, journals, newsletters, brochures, posters, pamphlets, and websites. So lots of experience, which is awesome. The last four years she was with was the technical marketing writer and web designer at Trinity Technology Group. She also has experience as a college professor and a freelance journalist. She has her bachelor's degree and two master's degrees. She can tell you where they're from. I can't even pronounce one of them, so you can do that when you come up here. Okay. So, yeah, in Spanish. So we're really, really very excited to have Alyssa onboard and on our team. So here you go.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you for the welcome. I am extremely grateful and excited to be here, and not only because working in recreation and parks has been something I've wanted to do for a long time, but I'm also excited to be working specifically with the Cordova District. And then on top of it, I have this gorgeous, funny, and incredibly smart team to be working with. So I want to say thank you very much for having me on. And for the record, my degrees are from, my bachelor's degree is from Mills College, and my first master's degree comes from Universidad de Alcalá, which is a Spanish university just outside of Madrid, and my third degree comes from St. Louis University.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
So we'll move, welcome, 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 and we'll move on to the roll call.
Director Lineback?
Here.
Director Sloan?
Here.
Secretary Danzel?
Here.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Here.
And Chair Reyes?
Here.
All right, so we're going to move on to any board disclosures on action items that we have for tonight. Do we have any board disclosures? None? So let us move on to the comments by the public.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff, and I do have one speaker card. I'd like to welcome to the podium Allison Alexander, please.
Either one, or? Hi, I don't know how close to speak to this thing.
Very well.
So I live down in the southern area of Rosemont, just south of Kiefer, over by Primrose Park, and I just came here to kind of formally request and urge a possible upgrade with some Measure J funding to add swings to Primrose Park. I'm pretty sure it's the only one of the parks in all of Rosemont that does not have swings. I'm not sure about Rossmore, but all the others have swings. So for some reason, Primrose just got, it's like the sad stepchild, I don't know, it got left out of the swings and that. So, yeah, I just wanted to encourage you guys to consider that, and I had the idea to just kind of look for some support from the community if other people thought this was a good idea. And so I got just a list of names of people who responded, they gave me their street. So I don't know if I can, it's just kind of like a letter with their names. This is only from the last, basically less than 24 hours. So I'm sure there are a lot more people out there who think it would be a good idea, I just haven't had the time to collect those names yet. So I think that's it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, and...
So, hi.
Hi.
Coincidentally enough, we had a PRMID Oversight Committee meeting this past week, and actually Primrose Park is on the list for our capital improvement projects for next fiscal year.
Okay.
So not only will you get swings, possibly, but an upgrade to the playground that's out there. So it is slated for replacement.
Okay.
And so when we are going out to community outreach and talking about what that replacement will look like for that playground, I would encourage you to advocate for the swings and see if we can accommodate that request. With the site itself, if we do a swings, there's obviously a larger clearance, so it may be an enhancement, so we would have to maybe look for additional funding, but just wanted to let you know that coincidentally enough, that idea of Primrose will be something focused on in the 1819 fiscal year for our CIP project.
Okay, great. And to clarify, so the entire play structure is looking to be completely replaced?
Yes, the playground is due to be replaced.
Okay.
And so in essence, we're removing that existing playground, and then we'll be working with the community to find out what kind of playground we're looking to replace it with. And if you have a suggestion for swings at that time, it would be the best and most appropriate time to bring that up. And then we would be working with Laura, the great over here, who's our park planning and designer, to do that replacement.
Okay, fantastic. How do I look for these, this community outreach? Like, how will I know when to?
Yeah. So we are really connected with Rosemont, I know that you're from that community. So when the time comes that we're going to be looking to do that planning process, I will absolutely be out there communicating that through the neighborhood, as well as the association out there, so that you'll be aware of when we're going to be activating it.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who may I leave this little?
Danielle.
Our Clerk of the Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Allison, thank you. All right, so we are going to move on to consent calendar.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have four items for your consideration. Item C1 is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors on April 18th, 2018. Item C2 is the district financial report for March 2018. Item C3 is to authorize the district administrator to execute a no-fee special use permit with the Rosemont Community Association for the use of Rosemont Community Park for the annual celebration of community event on Saturday, August 11th, 2018. And item C4 is to adopt Resolution 17/18-39, accepting the notice of completion for the Lincoln Village Pool Replaster Project.
Thank you. Are there any consent calendar items that the board would like to pull to be able to ask questions or clarify? How about staff? All right, if not, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move that the Board of Directors approve the consent calendar as presented, item C1, C2, C3, and C4.
Thank you, that's Director Lineback.
I'll second.
Seconded by Director, Secretary Danzel.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. The motion carries. Let's move on to presentation, item D.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item D1 is a staff presentation by the Human Resources Department.
Hold on here just a second.
And you might have to click the remote on, on the side. That was a very pretty guitar. So on the, yeah, left-hand side, there's a switch. There we go.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Chair Reyes, and Board of Directors, and staff, and public. We're here today to talk to you about the Human Resources Department. We're a tiny little department, but we do a lot. This presentation is actually going to be on the website, so it'll kind of show other people who are looking at what we do. It gives them a glimpse and a summary of what our department does for the district. So the presentation's a little wordy, but I wanted to make sure that people could follow it online with the context. So first of all, I want to introduce our department. Of course, I'm Andrea White, I'm the HR manager. And then we have Gail Bear, she's our administrative specialist, you've all seen her many times. And then Jennifer Wilfong, I see, is one of the most important staff members here because she is payroll, she's our clerk too. So hopefully I get this right here. So basically, what does HR do? We're the, the management is a practice, HR management is a practice of recruiting, hiring, and managing the organization's employees. We have upwards of 200 or more employees in the summertime, and so it's a lot of employees to recruit and manage, and I do that with the support of all the supervisors, of course. And there are six main components, and there's a lot of extra on top of this of what HR does. And the first one is recruitment, organizational culture, compensation and development, safety and risk management, employee relations, and training and development. And there, you'll see, there's a, we'll go through each one of those with this presentation. So the, one of the most important things that I feel like we do is our recruitment process. We're in a constant state of recruitment, and this is just the basic overall how we complete our recruitment. Of course, we evaluate the needs of each department, we update the job descriptions, we're doing that on a regular basis, the supervisors assist, post and advertise vacancies, prepare and select interview questions, interview qualified applicants, administer job-related exercises or tests, and do second interviews of top candidates. And of course, we do a reference check, and then we make a contingent offer pending pre-employment testing. That could be drug testing, fingerprinting, we need to make sure that they have a clean DMV record, it depends on the position that they're holding. But what is really important to us is our recruitment philosophy, and this is something that touches all of our departments, and it's something that we're really proud of. And what we always want to know is what is the success in the position? So I try to act as a recruiter to my managers and say, what are you looking for? And that helps me develop the announcement. So I am asking for exactly what we need in the position. A consistent competitive process, whether it's an internal or external candidate, we want to always hire the best person for the job. Department involvement is huge. I tell everyone, I am not going to pick your person for you. I don't know anything about irrigation, or park services, or planning. I need them to pick out who is the right person for their department, because then they get the best team. Of course, we try to avoid bias and select the best candidate, and that means understanding what you need in the position. This person does not need to be a communication specialist for park services. They need to be technically strong, so they may not be your best friend, or they may not be well-spoken necessarily, but they have the technical skills, the best technical skills for us to be successful. Of course, we have anti-discriminatory practices, everyone's heard my spiel, I do it all the time at every, and remind every time we have a panel interview. Asking the right interview questions, that's also extremely important, not just ones that sound good, but what are you trying to learn about the person? And so we select those very carefully. And then, of course, we want the most highly qualified, positive employees, and that is what helps us create our culture. And it really starts with the recruitment process. So going into culture, one of the main parts of our organizational culture is our recognition. And I think it's important for us that people, we recognize people who work so hard for the community, we want to recognize them for that. And so you've all been to these events, but we have our pickle program, and we like to tell everyone that we're kind of a big deal. And so we think you're kind of a big deal too, as our board member, so we have a little something for you. But what we do is we recognize staff who demonstrate excellent customer service, being consistent, best attitude, and teamwork. And part of these events that we have actually helps us with our teamwork, because then we know people in park services. I know someone in planning. Those people know who I am, they're not afraid to ask for help and for us to support each other. So we have the four luncheons per year, we have a winter, and these change, but right now, we have winter potluck, spring barbecue, Thanksgiving potluck, and a holiday recognition event. And we have a really slim budget, we do not spend very much. We do a lot of the food ourselves, we put it together ourselves, but we use all the resources we can to have a great event and make people feel like we're, they're important to us. So of course, we recognize staff that go above and beyond, we might have a raffle, and it's a time for us to socialize and get to know each other that we don't see hardly at all. And so recently, we're doing a staff that we're giving back, and this is a brand-new element to our recognition program, where we are actually, as staff, putting on fundraisers to help donate to the community. So of course, we've selected our own children's funding assistance, that our own scholarship program, and we have a 50/50 raffle where people pay a dollar for a ticket, and whoever wins, whoever gets this selected ticket gets 50% of the pot, and the other 50% goes to the children's funding assistance. Several times, a person just donates the whole thing, which is, of course, fun for us too. We're also sponsoring the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District homeless children. This last year, we bought Christmas presents, and it included underwear, shoes, toys, but things that these homeless kids who go to school in our school district don't have, and we sponsor full families and buy things for all the kids in the family. And we even had like a young student who was, also had a child, so we, even though she was still a student in high school, she had a young child, and we purchased gifts for both of them. Then we're also, this year, starting in June, doing, we're putting out like bins where they have, we, people can donate backpacks and underwear for these kids. And then we also, at Thanksgiving, do canned food drive and do a food locker. And really, Gail is the one who has put this whole program together. She really leads the pickle program, she makes the chocolate pickles by herself, at home.
I really do.
She does, she really, unlike the dinner.
Like the dinner.
She actually goes home and makes these things, and makes, you know, I mean, we've gone from, I don't know, like, we've doubled the pickles that people give out. So that card that's on your cup, you know, we went from, what, 30 at one quarterly event to now up to 100. Where it's not just to supervisors, to subordinates, it's people giving them to each other, thanking them for helping them with a project, or thanking them for going above and beyond, following one of those criteria. So compensation and development. So of course, compensation and development includes benefits, it's to recruit and retain quality employees, it's there for morale and satisfaction, rewarding and encourage peak performance, and encourage district loyalty. We try to be competitive, we're hoping to be more competitive as we go along. And our payroll philosophy, so Jennifer is so smart, I mean, she's the best payroll person there is, I'm going to argue with anyone. Not only does she try to be so compliant with all of the laws, and we talk about it all the time, like every day, we're, today, we were talking about, should we do this? Is it based on a week? Is it based on a pay period? We look it up, we do research, but she's great with accuracy, and her customer service is amazing. People call her all day, and she returns every call. So if you have a question about a paycheck, Jennifer will come, call you back, she's fantastic. So that's always our payroll philosophy. Our philosophy is, if we make a mistake, we fix it. It's going to happen, so just fix it, that's all we can do. So we're also in charge of safety and risk management, we're head of the Safety Committee, Gail and I kind of share that, although I think she actually does more of it, she just refers to me on occasion. And so we're head of the Safety Committee, we're the liaison with Capri for visits and audits, we're the recipient and respondent to all claims, any complaint that we get, we call the person back, whether they fell, or anything that happens in our parks. We call, Gail calls, how are you? Are you okay? Tell me about what happened. So it's not just typing up a memo, it's being in contact with our customers. We investigate all claims, take photos, interview people if we need to. Gail also assists me in managing all of our workers' comp claims, that includes investigating those as well. Employee relations, it's really important for us to be fair and consistent to all employees. We investigate all grievances verbally, or, you know, in writing. There's no such thing as, you know, this is off the record. If it's in front of me, it's on the record. Train management and supervise personnel laws and regulations, train on handling personnel actions, you know, the supervisors are out in the field, so they have to be my HR people for me while I'm not there all over. And prepare a review remediation or disciplinary actions, I do all of those. And so training and development, of course, we do a lot of training, Jennifer and I do a lot of training together about all of the laws and being compliant, and it's a lot all the time. But then we also provide all the new hire orientation for our staff. I do group orientations for part-time, like summer recruitments, and then I actually personally sit down with every new full-time employee and do a full orientation for them. I get to know them, they get to know us, they understand the history, they get to watch the pickle video, they understand our personnel policies, and it's really important for us to make that connection. And then we conduct, of course, mandated staff trainings. The big goal for this year, as you know, is personnel policies, and it's been quite an undertaking. I have been charged with reviewing and rewriting the entire personnel policy manual. We have an analysis of up to eight local agencies, and that also includes CSDA and SHRM, that's the Society for Human Resource Management, they have a policy manual. We have an employee committee, it's 11 people, and not all can make it every time, and they sit and go over all the policies with us, and we have great discussions. Or they say, that doesn't make sense to me, what does that mean? And I forget that they're not HR people, and it's fantastic. It's my favorite meeting of all time, because it's such great discussions about policies. We also meet with the Personnel Policy Quarterly, we've done it, we've got another one coming up. And then we're going to present the first half to the board in 2018. And because the new policy manual does not match what we currently have, we're not going to go for an approval until the whole thing is done. But we're going to go through half of it, so it's just not so much to review this summer. And then I'm hoping by this winter that will be completed and be ready for complete review and approval. So that's in the winter of 2019. A little bit more about HR is, we also do district office management. I am the IT contract liaison right now. We do hospitality, you see, Gail helps all the time doing that. I am the ADA 504 Coordinator for the district, so I take all calls regarding ADA compliance concerns or complaints. Two of us are residents of the community, and what we strive for is to put the human back in human resources. So it's always about excellent external customer service, give care to the community, be knowledgeable, find solutions, treat every encounter as an opportunity to show who we are, and of course, internal customer service, that's my customer, is the people who work here, and show our genuine care for our employees, their families, their success, be knowledgeable, updated on laws, procedures, and practices, and of course, be responsive and helpful and be a resource. That's what HR does. And so that's what we do here at the district. Any questions?
Any questions? No, just wanted to say, no wonder our staff are very happy, they, they're always smiling, they, you know, we have to take care of them for them to be able to take care of our community. And I think that's, that's a great philosophy. If we can, if they can feel cared for, taken cared for, then they will go out to the community, and they will have the energy, and they'll have all the, you know, all the commitment to be able to help the community sometimes deal with some challenges, and they'll have that same, they'll have that same approach of caring. So really appreciate it, I mean, I think this is a lot, I remember the times when we were saying, what about recognition? What about motivation? I don't forget that. And said, what about, and, and you were like, yes, it's coming and all this, so it's nice to see it in the works, and I'm sure you'll just come up with a lot more. I want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. [applause]
Pickle apron, I'm like...
And if the board wouldn't mind holding up their mugs?
Oh, cheers.
Excuse me.
Cheers.
Cheers. Those are pretty cool mugs, I'd say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, thank you again. That was a very, a very thorough and really interesting presentation there. Thank you. So we're going to move on to D2.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item D2 is a staff presentation regarding the Cordova Shooting Center update. This is an informative presentation only. No action to be taken by the Board of Directors at this time. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Planning Manager Laura Taylor.
Hello, Laura.
Good evening, Chair Reyes and members of the Board. This is gonna be a brief presentation, but we wanted to give you an update on the status of the shooting center and the concessionaire's agreement. So, okay, there we go. Now it's doing it on here, but it's not doing it up there, Matt. So what's the...
It's not changing the slides?
It's not changing the slide up there, but it's changing it on here.
So there it's back up. I know, isn't it hurting?
It's hard.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Okay. So as you recall, at your February 2018 regular Board meeting, the Board authorized the district administrator to request a release for proposals for the development and the operations at the Cordova Shooting Center. We did that. The following Friday, we had the request for proposal advertised in the Sacramento Bee. We also sent that information out to our consultant networks and published it on the CRPD website. There were no responses to the request for proposal, unfortunately. And the status of the current agreement with the current vendor out there is that his contract expires on June 30th of 2018. In fact, just today, we met with the vendor onsite to review the items that is the, are the vendors to remove compared to those that are the property of the district. So what happens once the vendor leaves the site? Well, we have a responsibility to stabilize the lead. As we all know, the shooting center has provided some lead contamination in the soil in the skeet and trap shooting area, as well as the pistol range and the rifle range. So what we will need to be able to do that is to hire an expert in that field, an environmental consultant, that will prepare a site management plan. That site management plan will tell the district what needs to be done to properly contain the site and that meets the requirements of the Oversight Agency. We have been in contact with both the DTSC, the State Department of Toxic Substances Control, and the County of Sacramento Environmental Management Department, still trying to determine between those two agencies which one is the appropriate one to enter into an agreement with for oversight. But we will get that figured out. And, and we have in the 1819 fiscal year budget requested funding, because we know that there will be some cost recovery required for that agency. So you will see that in the upcoming budget. And so once we've established that relationship, then, of course, they will review and approve and approve the management plan, which then we will move forward on implementing. And staff anticipates at this point that it's a fairly simplistic plan that's needed. We need to make sure that as we do our ongoing maintenance operations that will be required on that site, such as lawn mowing and things that will do proper dust control to keep the dust from blowing off the site. And we'll have to probably put up a sign that says, do not enter. We might need to beef up some perimeter fencing. But we will have a much better handle on what exactly that is and how much that's gonna cost once we get that plan from the consultant. And remember, the purpose of it is just to keep the lead onsite, not allow it to migrate off the site. And so, and that's our duty to keep the public from being exposed to it. So as I said, in the 1819 fiscal budget, you'll see a line item for, it's $45,000, which we anticipate approximately $15,000 for an inter-agency agreement, as well as approximately $30,000 for a consultant to prepare the site management plan. So in the long term, we need to determine what we're gonna do with that site. And we're certainly reaching out to potential stakeholders and potential partners to determine what are the community's needs, what are some of the potential partnerships, and what's the best use of that property in terms of the surrounding community. So we're really looking forward to working with, you know, future partners and figuring out what to do with this opportunity that has opened up. So that's the update, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Director Lineback?
Yeah. You mentioned just lead containment in the short term. Is that gonna be acceptable to the powers that be? They're not gonna insist on the lead removal, or lead can...
Well, eventually, you know, the site will, we will need to do what they call lead remediation. And so, but it's very economical to determine how the site might be repurposed, and then develop a remediation plan concurrently with a repurposing plan. Because, for instance, if you were able to cap the contaminated sites with paving or, you know, visqueen in the building and that, it reduces your costs. You don't have to transport contaminated soil off-site as a hazardous way. So it's, so we are obviously, as we're working with these oversight agencies, going to be talking right at the get-go, that the remediation plan is tied to what the potential future use of the property might be.
Thank you. Any other questions, directors?
So just going back to our meeting today at the shooting center, he, the vendor out there is making plans and preparations for exiting the property based on the contract that we have. And he has notified his customers that they're closing. They apparently were made of note in January. And so I was concerned about some of the memberships that he may have been selling between the time he decided not to continue on with the contract or, or not. But he had assured me that any memberships that were sold will expire June 30th. So I just wanted to add that to it, because it was something that maybe after he had left the property that he is responsible for, you know, obviously the operations of that facility. We just didn't wanna be trying to explain to the customers that were left holding a membership that was invalid. So he assured me, as I said, that the memberships that they have sold all will expire June 30th. So, just as a note.
Okay. So my understanding also is that this short term is going to be simply as soon as it is vacated, to see to it that we have a fencing, we have the trespassing do not, so that we do everything we can to be able to keep it contained and people from going in. I have a question about, for these questions, because I'm sure there'll be people asking questions, and not only with the how we're containing it, you know, the dust control and all that. Are we going to be having any, in our website, maybe, information? How's that going to come out?
So we are looking to actually publish our, it's called Frequently Asked Questions, that we've been getting, to really talk to the story here. I mean, this has been going on for well over a year at this point. So we wanna articulate out what the story is from the beginning to all the way through the remediation or whatever it was through the repurposing. So we have that planned to be loaded into our website hopefully by Friday of this week. And it will address any questions or concerns that the public may have, so that we don't have, you know, stories outside of what the story is generated that, you know, unfortunately may cost staff time unnecessarily. So we're loading those FAQs, as they call them, onto our website this week. As we get more questions from people inquiring about it, we will add those new questions and the answers to those questions to the website. We also are going to be showing on our website that the facility will be closing June 30th. And I've asked that the vendor out there also do that on his website as well.
And then staff will be working, and that's real important for the information that after, we are concerned with leaving it empty and standing still with no plan. So my understanding is staff will probably bring some, I know we needed to clarify what kind of activities, how would that work?
So currently, now that we have notification in the direction, I, of course, have to check back in with the federal government as to the deed that's, has the restrictions in it. And so I'm kinda playing phone tag with our contact there from the National Park Services. And they are going to obviously be notified. If we have a change of use on that property, I have to notify the federal government of that. But as the current deed states right now, it's for recreation purposes only. We don't have another plan in place right now. We were hoping that the shooting center would continue. So we are now starting to just reach out, as Laura was saying, with those partners to see what types of activities would be appropriate. But as we go through that repurposing process, it will obviously be an opportunity for the community to chime in and say, you know, this is what I would like to see. But we wanna start with, obviously, potential funders to turn the property into whatever it will be someday first, instead of just kind of shooting some, well, shooting some things out, throwing things out there that won't be a realization of what it is. So I do want some kind of understanding that we have an investor or some kind of person who'd be looking to develop the property for a different type of recreational use. And that will come as it unfolds when we start figuring out what some of those needs are in the community. So it's not gonna be anytime soon, because I mean, we're obviously, you know, needing to secure the property first and make sure that we're ready to go out there and explore some opportunities with those that might have an interest in the repurposing of it. So there is nothing at this point, to be fully honest about it, that we have in mind, nor have we had in mind, of what will replace it at this time.
I was going to suggest that maybe, and I don't know, but maybe it might be a good idea that when you put up the signage, that people are able to at least go to a website to get, because if it, if, you know, then this way, people will know that the ones in charge of this and that's handling this Cordova Wreckin' Park District, and will be able to at least have the website there, and, and we're not, you know, it's not hiding anything. This is transparency. We want them to be able to participate in understanding what's happening and also give their feedback in as we go along. They wanna follow through with that. Thank you. Is there anything else, directors, we need to say? Okay. Thank you very much, Laura. We are going to move on now to committee reports.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Committee reports, item E1 is a standing committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, which met on April 24th, and that is Chair Reyes and Director Lineback.
Yes. Thank you. Director Lineback, would you like to start?
Yeah, I can start.
Aladon.
So we covered a few items, as you can see in your board packet. I guess maybe, do you want me to talk about the first one, the fiscal...
Yes.
...year 1819 budget strategies? So we did not get a sneak peek at a draft budget, so we can't report about that. But what we were presented with was, I thought, pretty awesome, which is that the, the Finance Department, along with, obviously, the administration, went through a set of strategies that they wanted to apply, a set of, really kind of a vision for the district, and then to use the budget to accomplish those means. So I thought it was a really smart way to approach really long-term planning for the budget, even though it's a one-year budget. So I brought my little cheat sheet here. And so what they really were concentrating on is reserves, having a contingency fund, making sure that they're taking care of staff with salaries and benefits. There is a proposal that if there is room in the budget, there would be at last a cola for staff, since there has not been one for eight years. A water reduction plan, which of course is a huge line item in the budget, and so it's, it's not only environmentally wise, it's economically wise to do that. To take a look at our current debt and make sure that it's the best we can have, and explore opportunities for reducing the cost of the outstanding debt. And just sort of working with the departments to make sure that their needs are being met, but that their requests are realistic. So I really liked the presentation, and I think the budget will be easy for all of us to look at and understand, and, you know, hopefully, you know, all be on the same page with it.
And it'll be a lot more connected, and staff will understand it as well as, and managers will understand it as well as us. Thank you so much, Director Lineback. The other parts here was on the auditing services, which was plain and simple, that staff had requested a recommendation to be able to work with our auditing services provider for another two years. I mean, and the contract will be brought to the Board. Because I think everything is working well, and even the timing, before it was taking too long, we'd get it, but the timing is working well now. So we said, yeah, maybe two more years after that, Matt's going to work on getting a new, new people to look at our systems, right? And then the third one was the Cordova Golf Course concessionaire Services. And you know, at one time, one of the biggest things when we did approve the concessionaire, I had a very big challenge with a $500 rent, because I felt, you know, hey, you know, we're spending for all this. Well, staff is doing a great job, and it was discussed that, I believe, the concessionaire's agreement is coming due, the contract, and so now there's a, some renegotiation that's, that's happening. So staff is, is going to explore, obviously, there's going to be a more, how it's, the rent would probably be more covering of what it is, and I think our concessionaire has already had a taste of what he can make from it. And they will report and bring this to us in June. And hopefully, it'll be, it'll be a, a good, more equitable partnership here. Okay? And that's it for our Budget Committee meeting. All right. So the next will be public hearings, which we...
There are none?
None. And luck.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so motion carried. Now we will move on to the next. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H1 is Board Member Reports. Item A is Training. There was none during this last period. So we'll move on to item H1B, which is Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report.
Okay. This was a busy, busy, busy month for a lot of us, including staff, I know, but for us, the Board members here. So Director Lineback, would you like to start?
Yes. It looks like I kinda made up for not doing anything the month before.
I know.
So I did attend the dedication ceremony of the Drinking Fountain, which may seem like, you know, a small thing, except it was a collaboration amongst, you know, different parts of the community. So it was really, there was a nice presence there, there was some media there, and I think that it went very, very well, and really showed how community partners can work together. I did go to the annual general meeting of the BRECA Association, and they concentrated on the problems of security and homelessness in our areas now, and it was a very nice panel, including our own esteemed district administrator, who was able to give some good news to that community, and it went very well. And I think they, they kept things under control pretty well in terms of, you know, sometimes those meetings can get hijacked by people, and this one was, ran pretty smoothly, I thought. I attended the annual volunteer appreciation luncheon at the Neil Orchard Senior Center. It was an amazing transformation of the room where the event was held. I think it would be a circus around here without our volunteers. So they had literally a big top inside the room, and just all the coordination of that message was really impressive. And I think, you know, just as we heard from our Human Resources Manager, it's always important to recognize people who are, you know, doing such a good job and keeping things running. So I liked that luncheon, I try and go every year. I went to the Rosemont Community Association meeting on May 3rd, and they wanted to send their thanks to the Park District for working at the Day of Service in Rosemont Park and getting those tree holes dug in advance that made it, actually a much more fun event for people, that, you know, that having to, I don't, I don't even know how you do, I guess you don't do it with a shovel, I don't know. You do? You do it with a shovel?
Yeah.
Anyway, people were really appreciative of that, and there was a lot of good spirit there that day. And I was not able to attend their annual meeting, but I understand the Park District was represented there, which is great. The Heron Landing Community Center Outreach Committee meeting, I would have loved to have seen more people there. I thought the district staff did a great job of preparing a presentation for the community and being really clear about wanting their feedback and that they would respond to that feedback. There was a little bit of, you know, people getting distracted about security in other areas, and, you know, I wish there had been more direct feedback from the community about what we were trying to get from them, to call from them, which was what should this community center offer. But it was still, you know, I think the more we go out there, the better it is. And then lastly, I did in fact attend Meet the Machines with my grandchildren, and they loved the Italian ice most of all, because... and they loved the Italian ice most of all, because their mother doesn't let them eat sweets very often.
They're with grandma.
But they had fun, and they went into quite a few of the pieces of equipment there, and almost got my granddaughter to go over where the hot, hot air balloon was, but in the end she decided, nah, not really. But they had fun, and, you know, she got to draw at the logo table, even though she didn't really, you know, understand that she was supposed to be creating a logo. She was just writing all the letters she knew, but it was still good. It was fun.
Good, yeah. It's nice to see all the kids. Yes, Director Sloan?
All right, put your safety belt on. I also went to the April 19th Drinking Fountain Dedication. Yes, I will piggyback on your comments. It was nice to see a collaboration. I understand that the feature story will be running this week in the grapevine, so look for that.
Good.
Next, on April 24th, I attended the Breka General Meeting, where, yes, Patrick got up there and had time to talk and, and inform the community that the Riviera East Park is slated for improving, improving, redoing the walkways. He got a, not a standing ovation, but he did get a round of applause.
Yes.
And it was thanks to your My Parks Enhancement Fund, formerly Measure J. The next event was the annual appreciation luncheon at Neil Orchard Senior, Senior Center with Neil Orchard. I sat at his table, and, yeah, it was like, the decorations that Heather did were, it transformed you into, into, at the circus underneath the big top. You looked up there, just looking for the, the aerialist and, and, you know, the trapeze. I didn't see any trapeze people, but there was jugglers, and there was a band, and I'm not sure what else, but they had, it was a nicely attended event. And oh, they did the conga, I think, around the, around the room. That was kind of nice. Inez, I think Inez led that, didn't you?
No, I joined in a little bit.
April 28th.
Had to get to my table.
April 28th was Kids' Day in the Park, and I tell you, that, that event is just a pleasure. This is a, I actually did have my, my 12-year-old son accompany me, only because other plans fell, fell through, through him, and he sort of like was dropped off. But he, he had a good time. I think that it's a, it's mostly geared towards maybe 12 and younger. So if there was a way to, I remember last year, there was the people doing the, kind of like the jumping things, or jumping from one thing to another and doing kind of like extreme, what do you call it? Extreme jumping, where they were just crazy, and I think that's something that he might, he was kind of interested in. But the theme was, was, was nice, and the weather was nice, and it just was a great day for everybody, no matter how old you were or are. The next thing, on May 1st, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association Meeting, and just to update you on the sports renovation projects, that Stone Creek Soccer Turf got $8,100 towards replacing or fixing or kind of like upgrading it somehow with, with vitamins or nutrients and stuff for that. So that's to let you guys know that one. And also the Cordova Lane Field Little League Lights, they got $22,000. So I don't know if that, and I forget if that's going to be the major league field or not, but I think it is a major league field.
Was this from Measure H?
Yeah.
Funding, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And something that came up on the table was rugby seems to be a, we do, every year they have a major event here, kickoff event, held at, right by Cordova High and Mills and the back fields there by the Little League, I mean, the softball. And it's, you know, worldwide attendance. There's people from all over. And it seems that the, the presence of a league or some type of programs for rugby for the youth in Rancho Cordova is almost zero. And so the, the question was possibly they could team up with CRPD and forming some type of classes or programs at Hagan Park. So they'll, someone will be approaching you for that. I think that might be a great, a great thing. They did a program where they did send people out to schools and just introduce the sport, and it was really well-accepted. But then there's, at that point, it was, it's nothing else to do. There's no mother, no, no leagues or no programs to further the education or the interest. Our next one, May 8th, Rosemont Community Association Annual General Meeting. Pat was there. I was there. It seemed to be like Director Lineback stated, it was taken over by the, a few questions in the audience. At least at the Breka event, they allowed everybody to talk. This one was basically driven by questions from the audience. So, but there, afterwards, they did approach me, two people approached me, and one had to do with a joint use agreement between the Cordova Wreckin' Park District and the SAC City School District, and to see if we can get that moving along and, and see what more things we can do to promote that partnership. And also pickleball. Someone said, I want pickleball, you know, we have all these tennis courts, and so I informed them that there actually is going to be a, a survey or someone going out and evaluating the use of our tennis courts to see if we can maybe take at least one tennis court and make it into two pickleball courts.
Good.
Which I think would be fantastic.
That's great.
I mean, I'd be out there every time I want a pickle. Not a chocolate one. Next thing, May 9th, Heron Landing Community Center. Yes, very well-staffed. The presentation was fantastic. The weather was a little cold, if I remember right, and windy. But that park is so beautiful, and I took shots of it because I was, as I was walking around, I was telling people how it, this park won an award for the CRPD, and, and it's just, it's a beautiful, beautiful park. And this, the, the one question I think is that's going to be more of a, of an issue that, that we're going to deal with, and I don't think it's going to be a, something that's going to be a, a problem, but they, they did talk about the sound level being controlled. And they didn't want people, they didn't want people out there much past 8:30, but if you, you know, that's kind of-
Especially in the summer.
Yeah, but if it's like a wedding or something, it might be tough to, people leave it at 8:30.
10.
I think 10 sounds right to me.
Yeah.
But I do wish it was more people involved, you know. We had Craig Osborne out there, who is very instrumental in the Homewards Association, so at least he, I'm sure he would share what he, what he took from the meeting and back to association, which possibly will probably be going out there anyway, talking about it as that project advances. Meet the Machines, May 12th. Meet the Machines meets Hagan Park. I tell you, once you, although we didn't have the segues, because I guess turf problems, it's unlevel and it'd be too dangerous. It was a, it was still, an exciting event, and it was well-attended, and the weather was nice. And I, my kudos to the CRPD crew that puts that on. It was really nice. Thank you very much. And IFEST. IFEST, the premier event, I think, of the, of the year, because it's just, it touches so many bases with the, with the diversity of our community. It was fantastic, and it, this would be the 15th anniversary, they had the Kinseon, Kinseunas, Kinseonas?
Kinseras.
Kinseonas, Kinseonas, where the, the fathers and daughters got out of a limousine and marched up to the stage, and they had the, the dancing and the formal, you know, I don't know what they were, they were just doing all these sorts of different things up there, and it was just fantastic. I really liked to see the cultural flair in our community. It's really fantastic. And I think that's, that's enough, and I'm hoping Brian can-
Exhaustion.
Up some of that.
Director Danzel, or Secretary Danzel, I'm sorry about that.
My, my month looks really small, unfortunately. At the end of April, early May, I started a new job, so I start a little later in the morning, but also get off a lot later at night. I don't, I don't get home till about 8 o'clock at night now, which is something I haven't done in many, many years. So my events, unfortunately, I couldn't attend some of these, but I did attend the Drinking Fountain at Hagan Park, which, which was, which was nice, the collaboration between all the agencies and a community group. But what was also nice is that SACFIT was the running group that came in with, with that donation and that idea to put that drinking fountain there. But one of the, one of the, actually, two of the other running groups that I run with, I introduced it to them because they were taking off from Hagan Park, and one of the ladies I run with, she turned around, she said, man, I forgot my water. I said, oh, no, no problem, there's a drinking fountain, it's right here before the end of the trail. She's like, when did they put that in? So she was very thankful for that, and it's, you know, the groups that I do run with, they're very thankful for that, because it just happens to be Hagan is one of those spots where you're a couple miles from any drinking fountains, like SACFIT had talked to us about. So that, that's it for me. It was, but it was good ceremony, and it was nice to be recognized, not just, and it wasn't just us there, it was, you know, there was the other players there, but then also the media was there, and I got quite a few phone calls and things that, that afternoon from people saying thank you for, for doing that for their community, so.
Great. Vice Chair Yearwood?
Well, I didn't attend the Drinking Fountain Ceremony, no, sorry. I did go to the Heron Landing Community Center Outreach Meeting. I agree, it would have been nice if there were a few more folks out there, but staff was well-prepared and well-represented. I'm looking forward to the rock climbing wall, the one kid asked for, and that virtual, virtual reality-
Room.
Room for playing video games, which that technology hasn't been created yet, but maybe by the time this building gets in there, it will be. He was ready, he was ready, so. Also went to Meet the Machines at Hagan. It was, I liked it because it didn't seem quite as warm as being out at Mather on the asphalt or on the AstroTurf, so it was well-attended. It kind of flowed a little better, too, because people just kind of circulated around. It's a shame the wind kicked up, because it would have been nice to have the hot air balloon, even though the kids love pulling on that chain to make the, the flames go, so. But another great event. The kids loved it when the beach balls were being blown up in the air.
That was a good one. That was a good one.
I didn't know we had such types of equipment, so. But that was it for me.
Thank you. I had attended several of the ones together with Director Lineback and Sloan, so kudos, yes, all these, the dedication ceremony. That in particular, as we say, the partnerships. It was a small project, but it brought in the Rotary, Park District, SACFIT. So those are wonderful opportunities, and I'd, and, and it brought something to our park that would serve our community. So it would really be nice if we could have a few more of those. And I think staff is so, like, ready, so that, and I really thank them for this, and Jerry, it's almost like anytime someone comes up and says, we want to do something, it's wonderful for us to be able to answer. The other thing, the Breka was good, volunteer appreciation lunch. It was really fun, beautiful, well-set up, and I'm always honored when we can have, you know, Donatoli there, and we can have the Mayor French Cordova. It's really very important for us to be able to have a lot more of these occasions. The Heron Landing was a, was very interesting, because yes, it was well-presented, and staff handled questions or comments very well. And that was different, because initially we started off with, you know, we started off with a small group, but these were residents that knew how and, and valued the ability to give input, you know, on these outreach. And it was really very, very well-handled. I mean, there was times where there was a little bit of a, a slight, you know, there'll be too much noise, there'll be too many people here. But you know what? It was very well-dressed by staff, and it's like, we hear you, we hear you. We'll do the best we can to serve the community, but at the same time, also to hear what you have to say. And that Heron Landing Park is kind of like known for that, because we do remember the times when we had to have so many outreach meetings, and we had so much animosity and all this. People were upset, that feeling like they weren't heard. And then when we finally showed them by the, by the drawings and all this, there was all of a sudden a lot more of a bonding relationship than celebration. And it's come out very well. As we were winding down, families that were walking around with their kids, and I'm sure they came home from, they, younger families were coming out, and they were asking, and we told them what was happening, and they said, oh, and I said, it's very important that we're here to hear what kind of programs and services you would like to see here. And it was very interesting, because they had some other take for the young families. So I did tell them about the surveys, that was going to be electronic, and they were like, oh, that's perfect. So I said, tell your, your, your friends, your neighbors, your family to weigh in, so that we can, you know, get a lot more of all the different sectors, you know, age groups, cultures, and, and hopefully address all of that in a little way or so. So that is exciting. The Meet the Machines was so much fun, and those balloons, but those, the balls that they put, the kids just loved it. The only problem was, a little kid would come up, my granddaughter, put it there, and when the ball blew, she was like, where is it? And everyone else is running for it. And she's like, that was my ball. So it was funny, because I had to be there and try and help get a ball, but I felt so bad when I had to hold it away from a kid who was running for it. So that, it's like, okay, you better watch your ball, where the ball's going. The other thing that Director Lineback and I did attend was yesterday, on Monday, the PMRID Oversight Advisory Committee, and that was very interesting. We were there, they were handling the budget, and they were talking about the different projects, and, and I thought that it was very engaging, and it was run. And it was nice to hear the voices of these representatives of the zones that we are trying to serve better. And I, I saw then, we had Bonnie was, is now the chair, right? And then the vice chair is Doug. And it was very interesting on how the whole staff was working with them, so I, I really enjoyed that, and that meeting. And that's it. So, we're going to move on to the next.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H2A is regarding a ballot vote, the independent special district representatives on the Sacramento County Consolidated Redevelopment Agency Oversight Board. So we have a ballot vote here for two positions, the independent district representative and the alternate. As you know, at the March meeting, we nominated Director Lineback, and she is on this ballot as the representative.
Very good.
There are three candidates for representative and one candidate for alternate. The board may choose only one from each of those categories, and I have provided a sample motion there where I actually consolidated the motion. Thank you.
So are we at this time supposed to do a motion to vote?
If the board chooses.
If the board chooses, well.
Shouldn't we go over these resumes first?
They are so-
Had to pack it for a week.
Okay, yes, Secretary Danzel?
I would like to nominate our own Director Lineback for the representative, and Jeff Fay for the alternative representative, or Frye.
So moved by Secretary Danzel, seconded by Chair Reyes. Rock and roll vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. Good luck, Terry. Hope you bank it. All right. Okay, on to the next, which is comments by staff on non-agenda items, yes?
Yes, item I1 is the monthly district report for May, and I'll turn it over to Administrator Larkin.
Thank you. Just some highlights from the past month, a lot of which I have attended in the reports from the board members. A couple of things I just wanted to pull out was, I just wanted to publicly thank Matt Gadel, actually, our finance- our finance manager, for pulling together all the needed financial documents and for answering the numerous questions related to the finance plan in order for the district to secure their $5 million project through, for our community pool project, which was funded on Tuesday. So thank you, Matt. I think it's been fantastic.
Thank you, Matt. So are you telling me it was funded on Tuesday, therefore it is money in the bank?
It is in our trustee account. And we'll be able to use that funds towards the pool project exclusively. And we have a three-year window in order for us to activate and get that money done. So I do have a novelty check that I would like the board to get up and have our picture taken in honor of this amazing accomplishment. So Matt, I have you up there as well.
Come on, Matt.
Take a picture? Nope, you're in it.
You worked real hard.
Maybe come a little closer, like this is what you were all about.
Very good, very good.
Just the start. This is the finish, girl.
This is the start of many more. No, I'm waiting for you.
Hustle, Michael.
Right there, Michael.
Dive in.
What'd you say you like to wear?
Photomom.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Like the dills.
Mr. Larkin.
So in continuing my report, I did speak at the Breka Annual General Meeting and I appreciate Bonnie and the folks that had me out there. I really enjoy actually going out to the Breka meetings every year and especially giving them good news. Our CIP project dictates that we will be working on the replacement project for those pathways out there, which is really exciting and very needed. So that was great to be able to share that information and that good news with them. Let's see, some other things that have not been covered. We did have a PRMID Oversight Committee meeting. And we discussed next year's fiscal year projects plan as well as our capital improvement plan. And I thought it went really well. That's a great group of folks that are engaged in what we're doing. And we will be having a report coming forward from the Chair of PRMID at a future meeting to discuss our recommendations from that, that particular meeting. So in the clerks, clerk of the board, I know that Director Sloan has already said, "But we won the CRPD Annual Conference Award for the facility design, actually, outstanding new facility for Heron Landing Community Park." So congratulations Laura and all the staff for pulling together another award-winning park.
Very good. Do we have an award wall?
Yeah, we're just chock-full of awards this month. The other part too is, we had at a previous meeting earlier in the year, said that we'd be bringing forward a board, electronic board agenda system as well as a minute system. So after evaluating our needs for the budget critically this coming year, we decided that that's probably not the best system to get our problems solved in terms of efficiencies. So we have hired Rose, who is our new assistant to Danielle. And the board docs program that we were intending to use, unfortunately, the company that we're working with has, to put it nicely, has been difficult and they've changed ownerships. And so now it was originally intended to be a resource and now we're finding that it's probably not worth us going forward with an $11,000 fee associated with that type of resource. So we're going to activate Rose to hopefully get that work done and that is the efficiency we're realizing.
Wonderful.
Also, in the Budget and Finance Division, the finance team is reviewing bid results and analyzing if the refund for the loan makes financial sense to move forward for the Mather Sports Complex. As an update, we met with our financial consultant. We sent out an RFP to banks, to 19 banks. Nine responded. And we are really at this point deciding on the best deal. We have a local bank that's very interested in working with us. We look like we may be realizing approximately a $10,000 savings with a $95,000 total savings at the end of the loan if we go with a refinance. So we're really excited about that. It is a sign of confidence in our agency now, which we hadn't realized the last time we went out to go refinance. So I'm really excited about, you know, our direction going forward. And it's just another sign that we are being looked at with a lot of confidence and financial security. So that's just great news. And we'll bring forward to the board in, I believe, June or July after that financing plan has gone through with that savings. We have gone through a management analyst interview process. And we will have to go back out for that management analyst process. We have four interviews scheduled for next Thursday. And we're hoping to land someone in the position. So again, thank you to Matt. He's been going through our budget time at this point alone. And of course, with the help of our staff. But Matt really has burned the midnight oil in getting this done. So I really appreciate those efforts. In Human Resources, they are tenaciously working at the employee handbook with their committee members. They meet every month and the group of 10 to 11 staff members discuss all those policies. And we're excited to bring those forward to you in the summer for the first chunk of those policies to be reviewed by the board. In Benefits and Administration, Human Resources is conducting three open enrollment meetings in the month of May for full-time benefited staff. Changes and additions to our offerings were discussed with them and the District Broker Employer Section Insurance Services. And it continues to provide online enrollment system for employees to make changes, elect coverage, and obtain important documentation for the plans. In Park Services, the staff are working with our alarm systems in the Mather Sports Center, looking at installing one and getting it on a system. The other part too is, we are now reaching out to the homeless outreach team. They're called HOT. And it's a new division created by the City of Rancho Cordova PD. We had a meeting with them, discussed our concerns in the park systems. We spent about a good hour and a half with them discussing how we can support each other. And we've had staff attend their, is it weekly meetings, Alyssa? Is it every Monday?